Good evening and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. We're all members are present with the exception of Chair Jacobs, who is joining us online. Chair Jacobs?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. As a reminder, board members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting, so we can focus on the matters immediately before us. To my fellow board members, district staff, and members of the public, when speaking, please make sure your microphone is turned on and speak directly into it, so our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you clearly. Again, thank you so much for participating in or attending tonight's meeting. Now, we're going to have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for tonight's school board meeting. We are going to begin tonight with the final installment of this year's rivalry love football challenge. You might remember at a previous meeting, Members Bird and Felder had a bit of a wager about the Wakava-Jones matchup. I'm going to turn things over to Board Member Felder.
Yes. Good evening. Yes. Well, now, Member Bird, it seems the Tigers roared a little too loudly for the Mustangs this time. It was a hard-fought game, especially in the first half, but ultimately, the Jones High School Fighting Tigers pulled away for a 28 cents victory. Is that supposed to be in the game highlights? Okay, no, I'm good. So, Member Bird?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Oh, don't forget to give her the jersey.
Oh, I got it, baby. I'm ready for.
Yes, I will fulfill my duty and put on my Jones jersey, and I have to tell my sweet Mustangs that it was that you should hold your head high. It was a hard-fought game, but let's face it, Jones is undefeated this season. For the first time in how many years? Twenty-something?
Twenty years or something.
Yeah, so, I mean, come on. I'm happy for Jones to be able to claim their undefeated season, I suppose.
Yes. And, Member Bird, this is yours to put out. That orange and green, oh my God. Yes. Yes, that orange and green.
It looks pretty. I see that the Jones High School Principal Orlando Norwood, nope, he's not here. I was gonna say, that's not you. The AP is here. Yes, along with our Jones mascot. I'm going to ask you all to come up and stand in front of the dais while Mr. Flores, the district's athletic director, comes up to the podium. Members Felder and Bird will also come down to take a few photos, so come on. Come on down.
So pretty, y'all.
Yep, go ahead.
Good evening, Vice Chair Charles, Vice Chair Gallo, school board members, Dr. Vasquez and staff. It is my honor to come up and recognize the last board challenge for this year. It was a valiant effort by the Mustangs. They played tough through that first half. I thought it was going to go deep into the game, but unfortunately, it did not happen for them. But when we talk about the great Jones High School, 10-0, district champs, number-one seed for the playoffs, it couldn't be more proud and honored to deliver this trophy to Mr. Corn and the Jones Tigers.
Congratulations. Yes, congratulations. We miss you. I miss you, University High. Aww. So sweet. I know. That was wonderful. This year's friendly, and it's just friendly till someone has to wear a tail and ears. Yeah, and then you wonder what you're doing. I did too hug your lion.
Next year.
Next year. This year's friendly rivalry love challenges have been a lot of fun and very exciting. It's more exciting when you win than when you lose, but that's neither here nor there. It's also a wonderful way to celebrate our schools and their spirited communities. And now, we will continue with the rest of our agenda. Thank you, Mr. Flores, for everything. It really is a lot of fun. These, I really enjoy doing the rivalries even when I lose. It just promotes a lot of school spirit up here at the dais and within our schools and our communities, so it's fun. Dr. Vasquez, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two additional items to add. Item 5.02, approval of the Orange Education Support Professionals Association contract for the 24-25 wage increase and the contract language changes for education support employees subject to ratification by the bargaining unit. And item 5.03, approval of the 2024-25 salary increases, retention supplement, revised salary structures for school-based administrators, administrative technical staff, executive management, district police, food service managers, and hourly plan.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. I find cause to amend the agenda as requested. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda as requested by Dr. Vasquez. So moved by Member Castor Dental?
Second.
Second by Member Gould. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair Jacobs?
Aye. Thank you, Chair. Motion carries.
I will now move on to recognitions. We have some outstanding recognitions to share with you before our order of business. Each month, a school board member honors an employee in their district. These employees have shown exceptional dedication and contributed to the success of our students. We are grateful for every one of our devoted staff members, and this is one more way we are pleased to honor them. I'd like to invite Member Salamanca, who represents District 2, to tell us about the OCPS staff member she has selected for her school board spotlight. Member Salamanca.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited. This is one of my favorite parts of being on the board, which is just the chance to highlight and bring some of the incredible folks that we have in the classrooms, and we get to see them in our visits, but it's good to have them come here and get the recognition they so deserve. So, Mr. O'Neil Tobias is here with us today from District 2, and he exemplifies the spirit of creativity and passion at Liberty Middle School, where he's dedicated the past eight years to inspire students as a drama teacher. I've had the honor to visit his classroom now twice, once during a normal visit and another to deliver a senior student letter from the Impact Project. And one thing was clear, is that his students love him. Every time I'm in that class, it is so clear that students, whether they're shy or not shy, are engaged and excited to participate. He has this infectious enthusiasm for theater and the arts, and ignites this spark in his students. His colleagues and past students recognize him as a vital part of Liberty Middle School. One student said that he has restored his faith in the theater, that he has taught him a lot more about perseverance, the strength, and integrity through the class, and that he is one of the reasons why this student decided to pursue arts beyond high school and eventually in college as well. There was another student that praised how much he encourages them to think outside of the box and coming out of their shell. And even though they were shy on the first day of the classroom, that completely changed throughout the year, and that's kind of what we hope, that happens in the magic of the classroom. During his time at Liberty Middle, students have performed The Wizard of Oz, Thor &amp; Loki, Señorita Cinderella, Romeo and Juliet, and he also won the extra mile to raise funds to take his students to New York City to experience Broadway themselves and see Aladdin. It was a really big effort that I know takes so much work, but the students could not stop talking about it. Through his unwavering commitment and his integrity, he has revitalized the theater department in this school, creating an environment where students feel empowered to express themselves. And his dedication is truly evident in all the heartfelt gratitude that he receives from staff, from alumni, who even after graduation continued to reach out. So, he was also rightfully recognized as Teacher of the Year in 2021 to 2022 school year. But as a school board member, it is a privilege to have you as part of OCPS, and it's clear that your primary goal is to nurture the potential of every student, regardless if theater is what they love. So, I wanted to celebrate you for your remarkable contributions and lasting impact in our district and our students. So, thank you so much. I will take a picture.
Congratulations. Come on down. We're going to get a picture. Principal Jones, would you like to join us for the picture?
Also, Liberty just got recognized by Bennett's office, right?
Oh, that's great news. Oh, yes.
Yes, this is special.
Oh, wow.
Very nice.
My first intern job at Liberty.
Really? Theater?
It was English. My first time intern.
Aw, so cute. Congratulations again, and thank you for giving so many of your students their first taste of theater and playing a pivotal role in your students' lives every day. We so appreciate you. Thank you. All right, now, we are going to recognize some of our National FFA Organization students who won state and national awards in June and October. Students from Apopka Memorial, Hamlin, and Sunridge Middle Schools, and Colonial, Okowi, and Wakava High Schools triumphed at the competitions. I'd now like to invite Career and Technical Education District Senior Administrator, Mr. Fitzpatrick, to tell us more about our champions.
Thank you, Madam Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. Vasquez, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Armbruster, for the opportunity to recognize a group of outstanding agriculture education students on their state and national championships this past year. Danny Garner is unable to attend tonight, but he extends his heartfelt thank you as well. And we cannot miss sharing a huge thank you to all the principals, agriculture teachers, and parents for your continued support. I just want to take a moment and just give them all a hand, all the principals, parents, teachers. 2023-2024 was another very successful year for agriculture, education, and FFA. It is now our pleasure to recognize these outstanding accomplishments this evening, beginning with the 23-24 state championships. That's right, state championships. Now, I don't know if you want me just to read through them and then come be recognized, come up? Sure. Okay, so when you hear your name and your school, come on up. All right. First, Wakava High School FFA, Joshua Spencer is High School Safe Tractor Operation and Maintenance Career Development Event State Champion. Next, Hamlin Middle School FFA, Cameron DeSanto is Middle School Prepared Public Speaking Leadership Development Event State Champion.
Wow. Congratulations.
And next, Sunridge Middle School FFA is Middle School Citrus Evaluation Career Development Event State Champion. Team members are Emma Patterson, Ashley Stover, Mia Gordon, Glenna Mastriani. And next, Sunridge Middle School FFA is Middle School Land Evaluation Career Development Event State Champion Team. Team members are Ashley Stover, Mia Gordon, and Luke Popelman. Ashley Stover is also the state champion high individual scorer. And next, Orlando Colonial High School FFA is High School Food Science and Technology Career Development Event State Champion Team. Team members are Angelisa Delgado, Landon Redditt, and Roseanne Sidenyo. All right, and next, Apopka Memorial Middle School is Middle School Ornamental Horticulture Demonstration Career Development Event State Champion. Landscaping Division members are Ashley Ondenobo and Harper Gerrels. All right, and next, Orlando Colonial High School FFA member Fabiano Jimenez Amesti is High School Spanish Creed Speaking Leadership Development Event State Champion. All right, once again, Orlando Colonial High School FFA is High School Environmental Science and Natural Resources Career Development Event State Champion. Team members are Veronica Haley, Ashley Simmons, Ryan Jimenez, and Veronica Haley is also the state champion high individual scorer. All right, we're getting a little crowded here, but we still have a couple other things to recognize. Now, it is our pleasure to recognize the 23-24 national champions. Three of our OCPS FFA chapters received the Three-Star National Chapter Award, which is the highest national FFA chapter ranking. These chapters are Okowi High School FFA, Wakava High School FFA, and Orlando Colonial High School FFA. And finally, after winning the state championship, Orlando Colonial High School FFA member Fabiana Jimenez Amesti competed against the other state Spanish Creed speaking winners, and we are very excited to say she is the national champion.
Congratulations.
It is now our pleasure to have Ms. Jimenez Amesti come to the podium to present her National FFA Spanish Creed-winning presentation. I believe she's going to do it out front here, though.
Okay. All right, we're going to get a picture. If you want to come on back?
Yeah, we just wanted to say thank you again for all your support for agriculture, education, and FFA. Thank you very much. Pictures.
That would mean you too, Principal Knight.
So, kids, let's have the wearing sorority of Florida come forward and kneel, and then your parents and stuff can go behind you.
All right, who had the cowbell? I love it.
I love it. I love it.
I love the cowbell.
Baby's in the picture.
They're left.
Good. Good. Look forward, maybe. We're gonna do it on three. Look happy. Make sure everybody say good. Stand up. Look happy on three. Good. One, two, and three. Stay there. Look happy. Hold on. Let's see how you look. One more. Look happy. Excellent happiness. Oh, hold on.
Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations to our FFA students for winning these amazing awards and representing OCPS on state and national levels. And kudos to the students' FFA advisors for teaching them essential agriculture skills and creating the farmers of tomorrow. Congratulations. I'm just going to give them just a few minutes for those who wish to leave. Dr. Vasquez, do we have any newly appointed administrators to present tonight?
Yes, we do, Madam Vice Chair. We have two new administrators this evening. The first one is Mary Levy, who is the new Assistant Principal at Atwater Bay Elementary. Yes.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, school board. I'm very excited to start. I want to say thank you to Ms. Kane, my current AP, who I love to talk teaching and learning with. I want to say thank you to my sister Katie Lane, who was a teacher years ago at Piedmont Lakes Middle School, and when I was a teenager, I helped clean her classroom. I don't think she thought we'd be here right now. And then, thank you, Mr. Hendricks, Principal at Atwater Bay. I'm so excited to be a stingray.
We just had the dedication in Atwater Bay, and it was just simply amazing. What a great way to start the day, so you're going to be in a very happy place. And next, I have Zora Nurali Zavje, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name. You are going to be the new Assistant Principal at Bay Lake Elementary.
Thank you, School Board members, thank you, Dr. Vasquez, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Armbruster, Dr. Jones, Dr. Leftekes, and the staff for giving me the opportunity to serve at Bay Lake Elementary. I also want to thank Principal Mincy and my great mentors, Dr. Price and Ms. Hudson, for supporting me throughout my journey, and my children, Amin, Aman, right here, and Anam. And I also want to take a quick moment to thank my family far from Toronto, who's not here with me right now, but their support has been great. And last but not the least, I want to thank Smiley Tarika and the Religious Education Board for Florida and United States for sparking the love for education in me and paving my path to make a difference in the students' lives. Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. We're so excited that you are now amongst one of our amazing administrators.
And if y'all would come down for a picture, that would be fabulous. Thank you. Congratulations! West is the best.
Nice big smile, look happy on three, good, one, two, and three, stay there, one more, look happy.
Thank you. Congratulations! All righty, so at this time, I would like to call on Mr. Pollard, President of the Orange Educational Support Professional Associations, to address the board. Welcome, Mr. Pollard.
Hello. I always hated when the FFA leave because when I, from middle school all the way through high school, I always was in FFA, competing from public speaking to judging. What I was so surprised at is so many different other things that they, how they do in business side of it. All we did was judge cattle, swine, vegetables, citrus, and like I say, in public speaking, parliamentary procedure, just basic stuff, but they got so many things. So I always feel a warmth in my heart when you celebrate them. So hello, everybody, Board members, Superintendent Vasquez, all on the platform. I want to say this, for those who don't know, I'm Ron Pollard, OSF's president, and I'm going to keep my comments short because my grandbaby is celebrating her ninth birthday right now, and she waiting for me to finish up and run over there and eat that ice cream with her. She's at Maxi Elementary, which is a great school. Principal, if you're watching, I want to put a shout out, Principal Davis, his name is, he's a great principal, love it. So I was sharing with Superintendent Vasquez today that a really nice gesture would be to maybe send out a notice to admin that next Wednesday, I believe it is, the 20th, is recognized as National ESP Day, which is Education Support Professionals, which is what we call classified workers. And I think it would be a great gesture and a show of respect to them if admin or school do something to let them know that we see them too. Even though you haven't voted on it yet, any advance in the salaries is greatly appreciated. I'm not going to rave over because it's getting mixed reviews from our staff, but still. All of that, just to say this, though, recognizing your support staff because they do, they work hard, and they really do care. All right? Thank you all.
Thank you, and they do work extremely hard. Thank you. All right, next, we're going to hear from Mr. McCracken with the CTA, the Classroom Teachers Association for Orange County.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Gallo, members of the board, and Superintendent Vasquez. I'd like to start by thanking our amazing Central Florida community for passing the halfpenny sales tax. It's so encouraging to know how deeply our community supports public education, our teachers, and our students. And I want to congratulate all the teachers selected this year as Teachers of the Year at their schools, and a special congratulations to the top five finalists. Our teachers go above and beyond every day to make a meaningful difference in our students' lives, and these educators are shining examples of that dedication and impact. I want to thank also Member Gold and Castredental for your service. And Karen, I'd like to thank you specifically. Your service on this board has been truly invaluable. You've been an unwavering advocate for teachers, challenging the district when necessary on critical issues, from calling out the rise of micromanagement and burdensome paperwork, and emphasizing the importance of admin creating supportive school cultures. Instead of constant gotchas, you've been a relentless voice for teachers. You challenged unnecessary culture wars, and speaking as a former CTA member yourself, you've also reminded teachers of the value of union membership and the difference we can make when we stand strong together. Thank you for all you've done and will continue to do to ensure that all voices are heard in Orange County and respected. And finally, as we know, as we all know, November is Native American Heritage Month, and I'd like to read to you a land acknowledgement we share at CTA at the beginning of each year, and I would encourage the school board to do the same, and I believe you all have a copy of the one that we use. We recognize that we are convening on the ancestral homeland of the Ayes, Apalachi, Calusa, Temuqua, and Tokobago tribes. The Seminole Tribe of Florida and the Micusuki Tribe of Indians of Florida are two of three federally recognized Seminole nations, along with the Seminole Nation of Oklahoma people. We wish to pay our respects to the elders, past, present, and future citizens. We strive to hold space and value the perspectives that these nations share regarding their histories, cultures, and traditions. Let us search our hearts for how we might build relationships with sovereign tribal nations to ensure access to inclusive spaces fostering innovation and collaboration. And as Thanksgiving approaches, I encourage everyone across the district to be sensitive and accurate in how we represent Native Americans. We have additional information for you to pursue this journey on our website at orangecta.com and two other websites. You can find anti-bias children's books at socialjusticebooks.org and firstnations.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken. All proclamations were adopted by vote of the school board at the August 27, 2024 board meeting as celebrations/observation. The list will remain on the agenda for the entire school year. Mr. Pomerini, do we have anyone who has come to speak to the school board on any of the items under public hearing on the agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pomerini. In that case, I'm not going to read. I know. I'm learning. Note, items 3.01 and 3.02, public hearing on the approval of the recommended rezoning of Panther Lake Elementary and Water Spring Elementary to establish an attendance zone for relief school 126-E-4 to commence school year 2026-2027. Dr. Vasquez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. As the board knows, we have had a public input, we have had opportunities for the board to also hear recommendations from staff on the rezoning of Panther Lake and Water Spring Elementary. I'm going to turn it over to Stacy Neal, who will provide us with the information for this public hearing.
Does it need to go down?
No, no. So good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair Gallo and Madam Chair Jacobs, Superintendent Vasquez, school board members, and all OCPS staff here or listening today. Before beginning, I would like to introduce student enrollment staff here today. Thomas Morris, Senior Administrator, Renata Paropche, Senior Administrator, and Dr. Andy Westerman, Senior Administrator. We are here for the public hearing for two relief schools, 97E2 and 126-E4. 97E4 is located in the southeast part of Orange County and will provide relief to Sunblaze Elementary, and 126E4 located in southwest of Orange County, providing relief to Water Spring Elementary. All rezonings follow school board policy JC. Staff with direction from the superintendent commences rezoning, a timeline is developed, staff meets with principals, executive leaders, and school board members, research and data is collected, staff holds a community meeting, a rural development workshop, and to present options, and there's a public hearing. Finally, the rezoning notebook is created where the rezoning research is stored. Rezoning types: technical or generally uninhabited properties and involve no students; targeted; rezonings affect a small area, limited number of students are involved; and relief schools are new schools, and it always affects a large area and a large number of students. Rezoning timeline: On September 23, 2024, student enrollment held a community meeting here in the RBELC at 6:00 p.m., a school board work session on October 8 at 10:00 a.m., school board rural development workshop on October 22, and today, November 12, is the public hearing. At the completion of the rezoning, and if approved, 97E2 will commence school year 25-26, the relief school 126E4 will commence school year 26-27. The name Orange County Public Schools has a unique naming convention for relief schools. Here you see 97 is the real estate property number, E is for the school type, and it's elementary, and the number at the end represents the school board member's district the school is located. All rezoning can be found on the OCPS website. From the website header, click on Schools, then School Rezoning. On and all current rezoning is separated by school level. The timeline is provided, the input surveys links are located, along with the current map options. Once the school board members vote, information is then relocated to board-approved rezonings. Orange County Public Schools offers grandfather transfers for students involved in the rezoning. The grandfather transfer can be found on the Orange County website by hovering over the header Current Families, click on School Choice, and from there, click on Student Enrollment Transfers, and then click on Grandfather Transfer. The grandfather transfer is for current students who have been rezoned by OCPS two or more times during a school level and have resided at the current address. Students rezoned from an established school to another established school have the option to remain at the existing school instead of attending the rezoned school. This transfer is also available to students who will be in the fifth or eighth grade and rezoned to a new relief elementary or middle school. It is also important to mention transportation is not provided by OCPS, and siblings of the student granted the grandfather transfer are eligible to apply for the transfer as long as the school has an available seat for the sibling and the school is not over capacity. The deadline to apply for the transfer is April 30, 2025, for 97E2, and April 30 of 2026 for the relief school 126E2. At the end of both the community meeting and rural development workshop, survey links were available for parents to provide input on the options presented. Those results will be presented at the end of each presentation. This concludes the introduction, and now Tommy will walk everyone through the growth in the area of school 97-E-2.
Okay. I want to start off with orienting you with this map. We are in the southeast part of the county. The red outlines represent the elementary school attendance zone boundaries. The attendance zone for Sunblaze Elementary is centered on the map. The hexagons represent areas where we currently have students. The colored areas are projects where we'll have future students. These areas are part of our residential database. The colors represent each project's status, whether it's planned, plating, or if it's underway. The school we're opening, 97E2, is in the development of Story Park, which is mostly completed. The area to the northeast of the school site is Meridian Park. When completed, we'll have 6,400 homes. Meridian Park currently is about 10% completed. To the east of Meridian Park is Sunbridge, which is projected to have about 7,000 homes. And to the south is Camino Real, which is projected to have another 3,000 homes. In the district's 10-year capital plan, there is an additional elementary school relief projected, 58E2, and that's projected to open in 2031-32. Also, we have an elementary school, 99E2, reserved in the Meridian Parks area. The last point I want to make about this slide is that right now, there is a distinct separation in the transportation access from Moss Park Zone northward. There are plans for this to change with the expansion of the Innovation Way south and the southern portion of the Meridian Park. We don't have a timeline for these transportation projects. This will not happen within the next couple of years, but when they do, we'll have more opportunities to relieve Moss Park. So at this time, I'd like to bring up Renata, who will cover the options for this school.
Thank you, Tommy. Good evening. I am Renata Paropche, and I will be presenting the advertised rezoning option for 97E2. Rezoning for 97E2 involves Moss Park Elementary, Sunblaze Elementary, and Vista Lakes Elementary. It should be noted that there are currently no OCPS elementary students residing in the proposed rezoning area for Vista Lakes Elementary. This is the advertised option. Let us look at the map. The red lines represent current elementary zones, and the colored areas are the new proposed zones. The south side of the map is the Osceola Counterline, and to the right is the Counter Road 13. Road 13. The yellow area is the proposed new school zone. Purple area is the new Moss Park Elementary. New Sunblaze is in salmon color, and proposed Vista Lakes is in green. For each school, a comment box contains information such as the school permanent program capacity, PPC, the number of students residing in the proposed zone, and the projected number of students in the proposed zone for the 2025 school year. Starting with the new school, the permanent program capacity is 791. Proposed resides is 692, and projected number of students for the 2025 school year is between 650 and 670. Moss Park Elementary has a permanent program capacity of 796, with proposed resides 1,001, and projected number for the 2025 school year between 920 and 940. Sunblaze Elementary has a permanent program capacity of 755, with proposed resides 787, and projected students between 720. Vista Lakes Elementary has a permanent program capacity of 731, with a proposed resides 581, and projected students between 520 and 540. The next map shows a zoomed-in area of the proposed rezoning area. And again, the area in yellow is the proposed new school zone for 97E2. Moss Park is in purple, and Sunblaze is in salmon. Next is the data table. The first column shows each of the school's permanent program capacity, PPC. The next column shows the enrollment at each of the schools as of February 15th, 2024, with the percentage of white, black, and other, as well as the percentage for non-Hispanic and Hispanic. The third column shows the number of students residing in current zone. The fourth column shows the proposed number of students in the new zone and projected numbers for when the school opens during the 2025 school year. The final three columns represent other demographic information, current and proposed for 2025-26 school year. FARMs stands for free and reduced meals. ESE is for exceptional student education, and ELL stands for English language learners. Please take a moment to review the numbers. If approved, this rezoning will commence during the 2025-26 school year. For the advertised option, we received input from one family in support of the option and zero for oppose. This concludes my presentation on 97E2. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Renata. Board members, we are ready to hear your discussion or any questions you might have.
Member Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair. I have not heard any issues with the proposed setup for 97E. I think the parents are excited, and I think we got overall very positive feedback on how we're thinking about that area. So from my end, it looks great, and thank you for staff for working on that one. I know it's been a long one.
Thank you, Member Salamanca. Any further discussion? Great. Member Salamanca, do you wish to make the motion?
Yes, make a motion to take the superintendent and staff's option two.
Perfect. I need a second. Second by Member Castro Dental. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Madam Chair?
Aye.
It passes in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Vasquez, you're recognized for 3.02.
Thank you. We will now look at the rezoning options for Sunblaze Elementary, Vista Lakes Elementary, and Moss Park Elementary as a result of the opening of Site 97E-2.
So actually, we'll be covering 126E4, and I'm going to orient you with the growth slide in the southwest portion of the county. Again, in this, on this map, the hexagons represent areas where we currently have students. The colored regions are the projects where we'll have future students. At Water Bay is the school we opened this past fall, which relieved Water Spring Elementary. We are setting an attendance zone for 126E4 to relieve Water Spring Elementary School again for 2026. Around 126E4 is the southern Hartzell Road area, which is just due west of Animal Kingdom and Epcot. This area is growing rapidly. For example, if you look east of 126E4, you can see the numbers of elementary school students. Those students weren't there this past fall. We anticipate many students will be in the red area surrounding the new school by the time it opens in 2026. Now, 124 is the second relief school, and is programmed to open for the 2031-32 school year, which will relieve both 126E4 and Water Spring Elementary School one last time. The last thing I want to show you is that our current Water Spring and Panther Lake Elementary School zones divide the proposed Hartzell Road attainable housing community project. This development is also better known as the Walt Disney attainable housing project. We will plan to change the zones to align this project with one school zone during this process. Now, Andy Westerman's going to present the option.
Good evening, everyone. I'll present the advertised option for the proposed rezoning for 126E4. This rezoning is a relief school for Water Spring Elementary and Panther Lake Elementary School. This is the advertised option. The red lines are the current elementary zones, and the new proposed zones are in color. Water Spring is in purple. Panther Lake is in green, and the new school is in yellow. Each proposed zone is accompanied by a text box with the following information: the name of the school, the PPC, proposed number of students in the new zone, and the projected number of students to attend the school in August of 2026 when the new school opens. For example, Panther Lake's PPC is 791. The proposed number of students residing in the new zone is 771, and projected number of students to attend Panther Lake in August 2026 is between 670 and 690. Please note the area on this map from Panther Lake Elementary School to Water Spring Elementary School. This includes the Disney attainable housing project that is currently spread between the two zones, but would be brought together into the same zone. Also, the southern portion of Panther Lake Elementary School and Water Spring Elementary School would be zoned to 126-E-4. Next is a closer view of the area. The next slide is the data table for the demographic breakdown for each zone of the advertised option. I'll give everyone a moment to review the numbers. If approved, this rezoning will commence in August of 2026. We received input for the advertised option from families, three in support and four oppose. This concludes the presentation on relief school 126-E-4. Dr. Vasquez?
Thank you. We are ready for any questions the board might have or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Member Gould.
Thank you for the presentation. This is the quietest rezoning I've ever had in 12 years with zero people in attendance. Member-elect Douglas, don't get used to that, because I will tell you, the community will be back out for future rezonings when they happen. But I am in support of this. I think it is the best option, especially with the road improvement that is happening because of that attainable housing project that will give some safe passage. There's many road improvements that are needed out there, but that intersection improvement will help with crossing.
Thank you, Member Gould. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
So I do make a motion to approve the recommended rezoning for 124-E-4.
Second by, we have a motion on the table by Member Gould. We have a second by Member Castro Dental.
Did I get the number right? I want to make sure I got the number.
126, sorry. 126?
Yeah. Sorry. 124 is in 2030-31, which won't be soon enough. Hint.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? We have a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Madam Chair?
Aye.
Great, so let the record reflect that it was unanimous. Thank you. I would also like to recognize Stephanie Vanos and Ann Douglas. They're in our audience. They are our school board members-elect. And you can join us next Tuesday at 5:00, I think it's 5:00 PM or 5:30? 5:00 PM to witness the swearing-in of Mrs. Vanos and Mrs. Douglas, along with the swearing-in of Member Felder and Member Byrd. So it's going to be an exciting evening. Now we are going to move on, if I didn't get lost, to the consent agenda. Mr. Palmerini, do we have anyone who's come to speak to the school board on any of the items on the consent agenda?
No, Madam Chair, but Member Gould does have to declare conflict on one of the votes, so before you do that, she needs to...
Yes, Member Gould, please.
On the agenda this evening is the approval of the district hiring me as an acting senior specialist subsequent to the end of my term of office. Under Florida Statute 112.3143, I must abstain from voting on any measure which would inure to the special private gain or loss of myself. I will file the Florida Form 8B with the clerk of the board, of the school board, within 15 days after the vote.
Thank you, Member Gould. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Member Front. Do I have a second? Second by Member Salamanca. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Madam Chair?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that all voted in the affirmative, with the exception of Member Gould, who abstained. All right, so we are moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements. First, I want to echo the comments from CTA President Mr. Clinton in thanking our community, our voters, for renewing the half cent. We are so thankful for their support of Orange County Public Schools, and we know that those dollars are going to go a long way in helping with our capital program. Thank you to all who helped make this happen. Additionally, I want to share that we had the opportunity to meet with my advisory group that represents our support staff, as well as the teacher advisory. I think some of the board members were able to attend. I think we got great feedback on that. We will be sharing out to all of our teachers this week what those recommendations are as it relates to some of the reduction in the work that they are doing. Some of the recommendations today from our support personnel were also very insightful. One of them actually was stating that we have all these different proclamations on all these days, but we don't have an OCPS day. And wouldn't it be great to have a day where it is Orange County Public Schools Day, and we all kind of come together and celebrate that day? So it was, it was great, great conversations. I'm also happy to announce that Tuesday of next week, the Labor Management Committee is going to be meeting for the first time, and I am looking forward to those conversations and being able to see what other concerns or opportunities for us to work collaboratively in helping our teachers navigate the instructional day with all of the concerns and issues that they are facing with. That's my report, other than to say a very special thank you to both Pam and Karen. It's been such an honor and a pleasure to serve with both of you, and although you're taking different paths, I know that you will continue to have a tremendous impact on our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Mr. Palmerini, do you have a report to share with the board?
I do, but first, I've just buzzed in, the chair would like to be recognized.
Sure. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Chair. Quick, just two quick things. I want, I'm so sorry I couldn't be there for Member Gould and Member Castro Dental's last meeting. I, this is such a sad day. I know, it's an exciting time for y'all, and I wish you the best, but I know I will miss you terribly. It's been such an honor to serve with you, and we have had such a strong collegial and collaborative board, and you all have been crucial to making that possible. I also want to take a moment, Dr. Vasquez, you mentioned the idea of having a OCPS day, and when you said that, what occurred to me, as much as you know, I always struggle with our state of the schools, and I stress over it, but it's always such a great opportunity to bring together leaders in our community and share the amazing things that are happening in OCPS, that maybe that might be the day that we declare to be OCPS day, and hopefully we would draw in even more people, like our incredible staff and our parents. And so just a food for thought, I'm probably, I'm probably going to regret I say it, because we have a bigger audience and I'll be even more nervous, but those events are wonderful, and it's an opportunity to showcase you and to showcase the incredible team in Orange County. So, food for thought.
I like it. I like the idea, and the board is nodding also affirmatively, so I think you may be on to something. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, Mr. Palmerini, your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all will remember, last time, I talked to you about potentially getting involved in the litigation with regard to insulin and the overcharging of that. I just wanted to let you know, we've worked out an agreement with the law firm that's doing it, Napoli Skolnik and Ventura Law. We've worked out the representation agreement. I'll be executing that and getting the board into that litigation very shortly. Second, the lawyers in our office went to the Florida School Board Attorneys Association November meeting. We had a wonderful conference, talked about lots of pressing issues, healthcare being amongst them, so we got some great ideas coming out of that, and just wanted to let you know, because, not because it's me, but because it's a great thing for Orange County, the colleagues around the state have decided to make me the president for the second consecutive year of the Florida School Board Attorneys Association. So, Orange County will have the president of the School Board Attorneys Association and the School Boards Association next year, so I think that is a feather in the cap of this board throughout the state.
We shall rule the world. All from Orange County. Thank you, Mr. Palmerini. All right, so are there any reports from the school boards, from budget communications, legislative? I don't think we have any reports. A few things to note, Orange County Community Action Board. The CAB designates one seat on the board for a member of the Orange County School Board. The CAB is charged with the advisory oversight for development, planning, implementation, and evaluation of programs to serve Orange County's low-income communities. The term of the... The term of the current school board representative, Melissa Byrd, will expire December 31, 2024. Vicky Elaine Felder has served as an alternate. If all board members agree, Member Felder will be designated as a representative for CAB for 2025. We all in favor? Are we agreed? Do we need a motion or just an agreement, John? Welcome to the CAB board, Vicky Elaine Felder.
And I'm nodding affirmatively.
And Madam Chair is also nodding. All right, citizens, this is Vicky Elaine Felder's night. Citizens Commission, or maybe she didn't show up to a meeting, and she got appointed. I'm not certain what happened. Citizens Commission for Children, CCC. The CCC designates one seat for a local school board member. The CCC is charged with reviewing the planning and coordination of services for and on behalf of children, youth, and their families in Orange County. Member Vicky Elaine Felder currently serves in this capacity, and her term will expire on December 31, 2024. She is eligible for reappointment. If all board members agree, Member Felder will continue in this role for 2025. Do we have agreement from our board members? Awesome. Madam Chair?
Nodding in the affirmative.
It's unanimous. Everybody wants you on the CCC and the CAB. Congratulations, Member Felder.
Thank you.
It is. Okay, so I just, I know that Karen, Dr. Karen Castro Dental and Member Gould would like to speak, but before they do, I have something for each of you. And so it's nothing big, but I just got this, these little books. One says difference maker, and one says leader. And it's just, it talks about what that means. And I thought of each of you when I got these and what it means for me about you. So this one is the difference makers for Karen, and then Member Gould gets the one that says leader. And then I got these little bags for you because this is how I feel. Everybody out there knows I'm a big Taylor Swift fan. Don't come at me for that. And it said, "I had the time of my life fighting dragons with you." So I just want you to know, ladies, that I had the time of my life these last six years, fighting dragons with you in support of public education and the students and staff of Orange County. And it has been my absolute pleasure doing so. So thank you. So this one is for Karen. Pass that down. And this one is for you, Pammy. And now, Dr. Castro Dental, you have the mic and the floor.
Let me put my glasses on here. I just have a few remarks on our last minutes of my last meeting. I know that serving this district has been an incredible journey, and I'm grateful for the trust and support the people in District 6 have shown me. And I know OCPS will continue to thrive under the guidance of the dedicated individuals who remain. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this wonderful community. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you. And to the teachers and the staff who are watching on YouTube, thank you for paying attention and staying informed. Continue to speak up for your students and for your profession, and plan to be here in person so that we can see you, too, both during the 4 o'clock public meeting or public comment period, which isn't televised, and the 5 o'clock regular board meetings. Maybe plan a date with your colleagues at your school to attend together. Because, believe me, there is power in simply being seen. To the Eatonville residents and stakeholders who showed up today to share the legacy of this historically significant community, thank you. And know that I will be in your corner even when I'm off the school board. And to my colleagues, I want to honor the all-female leadership of the board and the superintendent. I appreciated the willingness and the ability to listen to one another with an open mind. And to Dr. Vasquez, I appreciate your ability to not only lead one of the country's largest school districts, but also navigate the strong and diverse personalities on the school board. And finally, as a former teacher, I'd like to leave you each with a book with a powerful central character named Janie in the classic novel, Their Eyes Were Watching God, written by Eatonville zone Zora Neale Hurston. And know that I will miss you each and all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Castro Dental. That's wonderful. Member Gould?
Thank you, Karen. It has been an honor. And you know, I've had kind of, as I've called it, a melancholy month or more. Some has been a little celebratory when I don't have to do something again, ever. But most of it has been melancholy. I am not leaving because I don't enjoy serving. I am not leaving because I want to do less for my community, but I am leaving because my family is now my top priority. And so it's very bittersweet at this moment. But I was thinking about all of the students, then all of the staff, and then all of this school board that has been so magnificent to serve with. It's truly been an honor with the present members, as well as my past school board member colleagues. And I realized that the community in the same way we've often rallied together to move and support the school system forward. So I wrote a poem that I wanted to share here today. I wasn't going to share it here because I did leave a printed copy in the back, but it's really to all of what I considered my extended school board family. In the halls of learning, we've paved our way. Twelve years together through night and day. With challenges rising like shadows in stride, we stood hand in hand with courage and pride. Through storms of COVID, hearts held strong navigating unknowns where we all belonged. In classrooms and fields, we found our voice. Together united, we made the choice. With mentorship blossoming, futures took flight, new certifications illuminating the night. Students soared higher in academics and sports as arts filled the halls, a vibrant report. Community rallied, supporting each dream. A tapestry woven, together we beam. Thank you, my allies, for roles you have played in the growth of our youth. Your impact displayed. As we look to the future, may our bond remain, for each step we've taken has not been in vain. With gratitude overflowing, I hold this truth dear. Forever, I'm thankful for each of you here.